We'll call this meeting to order, the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors for October 18th, 2022. We'll call Mr. Veder.
Leyland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions for the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received? Is the motion amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved to the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carried. Public comments? Anybody in the public want to make any comments other than what's on the agenda? Anybody online? Hearing none. Moving on to claims and payments. Mr. Veder.
This week's payments and payments totaled $603,037. And... I have two copies of this. Some of the major expenditures for information technology, there was $19,207 for two new servers and $14,186 for hardware for the servers. For Department of Correctional Services was the monthly billing of $19,956. Juvenile Court Services, Detention Services was $25,530. For the Engineers Department, for seal coating, $70,527. $24,565 for mile rock and an $87,612 payment to Aspro for the Grundy Road paving project. Everything appeared to be...
I'll make a motion. Okay.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is the resolution. Please answer your name and its call.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning Cathy.
Good morning, Board. Cathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Brief update this morning, we have finished mowing the hard surface roads this year. And we have, we are done hauling mile rock, so that should be just, just about all of the rock we intend to haul this, this year yet. And then Lincoln Road Bridge Replacement, that should be done, and we are hoping to have it open by Wednesday. Can answer any questions at this time.
Yeah Cathy, I've got one quick question. I talked to you about this in the past. We've been getting calls, or I've been getting calls on why the county's putting rock down this time of the year right before snow plowing. Would you address that?
It's part of our, our normal mile rack, racking procedure. We, we would like to get 20 miles done on our, in each district. We have nine districts. We were able to accomplish that this year. Some days we do, do go a few weeks into October to get that rock placed. We do hope that there will be a frost before we get some snow, so that that ties it all down, so that we are not plowing it off the roadway surface.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Yolando.
Good morning, Board. Yolando Lovelace, the Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs Director. Where are we at? I just wanted to show a couple of things. I'd like to give you our quarterly reports based off of some of the things that we've had success throughout the last quarter, first quarter of this year. In that standpoint, I do want to thank you guys. I got the best job in the world, honestly, in that standpoint. It gives me great appreciation that the board is supportive of us in that standpoint. We just recently completed training down in Des Moines, three-day training. We had 78 out of the 99 counties at the training. On Monday, they had a commissioners training and they had 138 commissioners there. All of our five commissioners are now trained, formally trained by the state in their, in their job and their production and what they're supposed to do to make sure Yolando is keeping in code with the federal in that standpoint. So we've been kind of busy the last quarter with the PACD Act in answering those questions for whether it's a Vietnam veteran or whether it's a veteran that served in Camp Lejeune. You guys have seen all the commercials associated with that. And then the hazardous air in that standpoint. But I just want to push real quick. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time. As weather is changing, we're looking at how do we help our veterans in that standpoint? So next, on the 27th of October, we're going to give out free winter gear. All of the purchasing for the coats, the hats, the scarves have been through donations. So our donations that come through our office, we're taking that and reinvesting that into our veterans that are in need. This kind of goes with our stand-down. We'll provide a meal also for our disadvantaged veterans. In fact, we're giving out coats now because the weather has changed dramatically. So veterans that are coming in, we're taking a sanity check of them, make sure they're okay with having the proper gear in that standpoint. This Friday, AFL is doing a barbecue. I kind of sent this out to you guys, but I just want to regurgitate it just a little bit in support of our veteran community, and we would thank them for that in that standpoint. And then you and I, their Veterans Association, they're doing a Veterans Night Out in conjunction with Memorial, I mean Veterans Day, and it's right there on the 11th of November. There's a few other functions that's going on in Veterans Day. I won't get into that in particular. Just kind of showing you statistically how we look from quarter to quarter, coming out of the summer quarter, which is normally our biggest quarter. But this first quarter of this fiscal year, we blew our summer numbers out of the way. Again, a lot of that was driven by the President signing the PACD Act and getting more awareness to our veterans and what their benefits could be based off of the medical conditions that they have. And so in short, we, we've, in the last quarter, we've seen 570 veterans that came through our door. Out of that, 570, 99 of them were brand new. And then our walk-ins, we had 318 walk-ins. These are people who just walk in, not appointments. And so we have been able to handle that. And of that, of our Vietnam veterans, our last first quarter of this year, we've seen 230 already in that standpoint. So those are some very large numbers that we didn't expect, but I'm glad that they are there and they came through because that's what we get paid to do. And then our, our stoplight chart, we're pretty much green on our outreach area. About the only thing is our van rides was a tick down from last quarter, but everything else is green in that field. Under the benefit side, our healthcare enrollment was a little down from previous month. Homeless veteran PTSD claims were down. And we like to have a marker, so when I see things down from the previous month, I kind of put them in yellow just to make sure. And if it's a second month behind, then we start to look at, okay, what are we doing wrong in that standpoint? But I like to be transparent with the Board of Supervisors and the Commission. And then in the last one with our budget, we're all green there too, in that standpoint. A couple of things I want to share with you is our general services to our veterans. Again, where we're at after the first quarter, we're about 12% in our funeral expenses. You can see 12% in our shelter. We're starting to see that drive up a little bit more. We just housed a veteran for, for the weekend who was displaced in that standpoint. And the other ones, we're doing pretty, pretty good with. The grave markers, we don't typically see a tick in that until right around Memorial Day when we get grave placements. A couple of other things I want to share here, September was a slow month for donations. We only received $100. I know that the Amets at Evansdale gave us a, a pretty substantial check. That'll be marked in the next month, and we thank Evansdale and their staff, their commanders. But I did want to share this one. Right now, where we're looking at in revenue from donations from the Black Hawk County community and every kind citizen that's out there looking out veterans. We have about 28K in general funds that people have donated over the years, and it's just sitting in our general fund. So that's where we want to turn that around and reinvest it, because people are giving to us to give back to veterans in that standpoint. About $6,000 in the stand-down, and that's what we're using to buy the coats and all the winter gear. And we're also getting ready to go into our holiday season where we take care of our widows with the widows gift baskets, Thanksgiving baskets, getting to our Christmas and our baskets, our gift baskets that we do for the nursing homes, the various veterans and spouses in a nursing home. And you can see some of those balances, and just wanted to share that. And I think we should do that quarterly on what our revenue is coming in from people who are donating and looking out for our office. And that's the reason why I say again that I got the best job in the county. I'll continue to brag about that in that standpoint, but standing by to address any questions or concerns.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Great job, buddy. Anyone else? Any other department heads or elected officials? Oh, good morning. Good morning, Nafisa.
Good morning. Yeah, just really quick. Dr. Nafisa Cisse Bonnier, Black Hawk County Public Health Director. Today's my last day as a health director, last Tuesday, actually, not last day, but last Tuesday, as a health director presenting in front of you. So if you could just honor me by giving me extra time today. So in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I'd like to play a video for you all. It's one of our programs that is very well-respected and funded by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. You can play it. I don't know how to play it. Okay.
Care for Yourself, the program offers breast and cervical services, screening services for women. We do 21 and older for cervical and then 40 and older for breast. We do cover diagnostic testing if they are needed or recommended by a provider. It's important because women who normally wouldn't get in for screenings, get in. Cost is a huge barrier. Insurance doesn't always cover everything. Co-pays, deductibles, everything's very high. So a screening may not be important to a woman who needs money for other things. And women always take care of themselves last, so it reminds them that they can get in, it'll be covered, and early detection's the key. I think there's a few components that help make it successful. First of all, we schedule the appointments for women. So they tell us what works for them to schedule, and we call them, "Schedule it," and the timeframe that they, they need it for, for them to work. And then we also have a great rapport with providers. We are able to contact them. They know who we are. They set up referrals for us. They call us if they have a woman who doesn't have coverage to see if we can cover them. So I just think that the partnership with working with the women on what they need for appointments and the working with providers for helping them keep their women screened makes it fantastic. It works well.
It was time for my yearly mammogram, so I'd only gotten one just the year before I'd gotten my first one. I didn't start getting my 40 like I was supposed to, just... And I mean, I hadn't gotten my yearly checkups for 12 years before that, just busy with life and not doing it. You can make all the excuses, you know, like, no, I'm afraid it's going to hurt, or, you know, I don't have the money. Yeah, I know I have insurance, but you know, you still got to pay a deductible. I just don't want to deal with... So just all the stupid excuses. Just when I was looking up the number for the breast center in the phone book or on my, on Google, I happened to show the Care for Yourself program, the nights for, for that. And I'm like, well, I want it in the evening, and why not, you know, and whatever they, they can turn into my insurance, and then they can pay whatever. And you know, the first time they said, well, if you don't hear from us in, you know, then in a week or something like that, we'll call you back in a couple of days if there's something wrong. It's the first year. So this year, they said the same thing, and so like, two days later, I got a phone call. I'm like, that's, you know, that makes me a little nervous. So I went back and I took my husband with me this time, because I just knew, I just knew I was going to get bad news. And they came back in and said that it was positive for breast cancer. So that was a tough thing to hear. I'm glad my husband was there with me. Like, what if I wouldn't have, what if I wouldn't have gotten that mammogram? If I wouldn't have gotten the first one done, I would never have gotten the second one done. I'd be walking around with breast cancer right now and not even know it. And so by the time we found it, it would have been, you know, because it wasn't even palpable. It was so small that the doctor, even knowing where it was, couldn't feel it when he did a breast exam. So it was very, very small. We caught it really, really early. But had I never done that, I'd be walking around with breast cancer, and you know, in a couple of years, then maybe it would have been stage four, maybe it would have been too late.
It's really a good feeling, because a lot of these women, like I said, would not get in for coverage, or would not go in for screenings. So when we can get them in and pay for the screening, and they find out they have breast cancer, they caught it probably early. We can get them in, we can get them the treatment they need, whereas if they held off until it becomes a problem, there could be a lot worse circumstances that happen from it.
Just do it. Quit making excuses. Just do it. Get it done, you know? If you get a negative, great, you know, you're going with your life. If it is, you know, if it is, if you have breast cancer, you want to find out early. When it's small and can be treated easily.
Thank you. So our Care for Yourself program was recognized by the CDC as one of the highest performing programs early in the pandemic. The Black Hawk County Care for Yourself program has always been one of the more high-performing programs in the state. Our county has, staff has sat on state advisory boards and helped advise state operational changes over the years. It is a program that has been in operation since 1997 and under the operational control of the Health Department since 2000. It's funded by the Center for Disease Control, and the program's services include breasts and cervical cancer screening for the underinsured or uninsured. It covers out-of-pocket costs associated with breast and cervical screening. And it is income-based program, but income guidelines of 250, 50% below the poverty are higher than Medicaid to allow better access to the program. So this is a program that is so important. We've been doing promotions all throughout, you know, our county areas. And so these are truly one of the services that I ask of you all in this month to continue to support and under, and better understand some of our, our gaps in, and we partner closely with providers, both Mercy and Unity Point, to provide such services. So thank you for allowing me this time to, to present this wonderful program that I truly believe saves lives, and it's, it's important. So with that said, this is my last, my last Tuesday in front of you. I want to be respectful of your time, and I drafted a little speech, and I'll try my best to not be long-winded. I'm going to try to make it concise and, and meaningful, but please do, do bear with me. It has been an honor of a lifetime leading the Health Department. When I accepted this position, I was scared, not because I wasn't capable, but because I was the first of many things. The first black, the first black immigrant, the first black woman to lead the Black Hawk County Health Department. In fact, I've come to realize I'm the first of these descriptors for all local health departments in the state of Iowa. I had no idea how I would be perceived or welcome. For six years, I measured myself on the basis that if I failed, such an opportunity might not be available to someone like me. But I did not fail. Instead, God equipped me with a supportive board and team. Our Health Department became a well-respected organization locally, in the state, and nationally. I'm personally leaving with a great deal of pride. The Health Department's staff is a group of people that are dedicated, hardworking, and intelligent. Each one of them brings a unique set of skills and perspective. I know that I'm leaving a team that is resilient and capable to move the work forward. To all my dear colleagues, the department heads of Black Hawk County, thank you so much for all your support over the years. Your hard work and dedication keeps the county going. I want to thank personally Sheriff Tony Thompson, who's not here, for his unequivocal support and advocacy of public health services. Leading the pandemic response with him will forever be one of my greatest memories. Amanda Fazemeyer, saying thank you to you is not enough for me to express how grateful I am for your support over the years, for getting me through a few hard patches. You are the best human resource director. Rory Giving, I trust you will not miss my calls, especially on my earlier days when I thought I would freeze to death. Thank you for reassuring me the heater kicks in after fall. Lastly, to the Board of Supervisors, I want to thank you all for challenging me to become a better and stronger leader. Supervisor Schwartz, thank you for understanding public health and supporting our needs. Supervisor Chalka, we didn't always agree, but you always kept the door open and ensured that no matter our differences, you were available for our conversation. Supervisor Leyland, I learned rapidly the multiple ways to respond to questions. Thank you for keeping me on my toes. Now, public health became politicized, and as a health director, it became very clear that whether I liked it or not, I couldn't ignore the politics. Juggling the response, the questions, and the politics gave me the motivation to stand firm and transparent on my values and issues. Supervisor Little, thank you for the historical perspective you would share with me. And lastly, Supervisor White, thank you so much for the birthday cards. As you all are aware, Black Hawk County is the fifth-largest county. We have a population of approximately 131,000 people. We are demographically and residentially diverse. Our residents in both urban and rural communities experience complex social health and economic challenges, as you have witnessed in this video. These challenges need to address both by the municipalities and our county government. As a county, if we believe in the county's vision, especially the part that says, "We work in a culture of collaboration, learning from other successes, and together we anticipate and adapt to rapidly changing circumstances and demographics, both globally and locally. With others throughout our county and region, we form," it's in our vision up there, "we form a safe, healthy, culturally sensitive, thriving community." And the belief in this vision must start now in this room. The Board must be intentional about collaboration with county staff and our external partners to meet the complex needs of residents. It's important that we, that you all invest in the necessary resources of our departments. It's important that we value our workforce. The county's policies, pay, and benefit structures need to reflect a county that puts people first. President John F. Kennedy once said, "If not us, who? If not now, when?" Thus, our county's way of business need to reflect the county's us and the now. It's very true that elected officials have fiscal responsibility. It's also very true that elected officials have the responsibility to strengthen our county's infrastructure. Both issues are equally important, and it's this Board's responsibility to strike this balance, a balance I have found to be very difficult to achieve when there's no collaboration, efficiency, and adaptability. Our, our community deserves leadership that is bold, transparent, and committed to giving people a quality of life in the county. As elected officials, you must do the right thing for the people, even if the right thing might not be so popular. You must be willing to take a chance. A study conducted by the Pew Research Center in 2020 indicated that in the United States, 71% of people believe elected officials don't care about their average citizens. On this issue, there's essentially no partisan divide. Among Republicans and Republican-leaning independents, 72% say elected officials don't care. And 69% of Democrats and Democratic-leaning independents agree. This is the time to show all Black Hawk County residents that you do care. Their voices and lives are important to you all. Show them that you're capable of utilizing the ARPO funding for the betterment of the county. Show them you will ensure the modernization of the county so that we are better equipped to deal with future pandemics or disasters. Show them that you value all the hard work, hard-working and dedicated employees of the county. Let's put back the compensation study on the agenda. Inspire us and give us the hope that there will be a better tomorrow, not just for us, but for all future generations of our county residents. Lastly, and most importantly, may God help us do the right thing. May He pour discernment and wisdom into this room. May He forgive our wrongdoings. May He unite us for peace and well-being and the betterment of our community, and may He bless you all tremendously. Thank you. Nafisa, signing off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Nafisa. I just want to thank you. You, you led, you have, I just have nothing but profound respect and admiration for you. And you led your department with dignity, grace, and courage through some of the most challenging circumstances we ever could have imagined. A public health crisis of a lifetime hit us under your watch. And because of you, people are alive today in this community because of your work. Your work saved lives and the work of your staff and your leadership, your courage, and your refusal to back down from, from what was right and what was just, even when it became hard to do so. And so I am so proud of you, so proud to call you our colleagues, so proud to call you a friend. And I'm going to greatly miss you here at Black Hawk County, but, but I'm not done working with you.
No. Thank you. Thank you.
I too want to add to that, Nafisa. I want to say thank you. A huge thank you for the work that you've done, like I said, in such a short time. As you know well, the restructuring of the department and the accreditation, and then to work through the pandemic. I said your leadership was commendable, but I appreciate very much you challenging us to do better and be better and, and do a better job for Black Hawk County. That we all need to do that and, and look at that on a daily basis, probably. So thank you very much for that, and, and it's hard to follow a speech like you can hit so many good points, but thank you so much for your service.
Good luck in your future.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Amanda Fazemeyer, HR Director. All right, I just have a couple of updates here. First, just want to share a reminder that our flu clinic is going on right now in the basement today and next week. So those employees who signed up and signed the consent form for that are able to get their flu shot today. It is from 8:30 to 11:00 AM, and then 2:30 to 4:00 PM, and then the same hours on Tuesday, October 25th. And just want to thank the Health Department and the clinic for their support in getting that out to the staff. A reminder also tomorrow that Human Resources Office will be closed tomorrow all day. Anna Cherry and I will be attending the Iowa Employment Fall Conference, so I'll be sure to communicate that out to the department. So as just a reminder, we're always very accessible by email. But in the event there's a, a major concern, we can always be reached via phone or that email. So just a reminder about that. And I just want to thank Dr. Bonnier for the support and the work that I've gotten to do with her side by side these last six years in Human Resources. I can certainly attest to the support that we received in handling the pandemic, especially when it came to the employees. And we still lean heavily on you for questions, and I'm constantly telling department heads, please call Dr. Bonnier or the epidemiologist when COVID continued to be in our lives. So, but it's been a pleasure to work with you, an honor to work with you, and I'm very proud of you, and wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Any other department head or elected officials? Hearing none. We'll move on to a minutes approved for October 11, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have hearings coming up at a hearing bid opening for a proposed fiscal year 23, reventment project L 7011 at 9:07. We got ordinance number 77-270, reason only request for Chad and Tricia Brown. In 9:09, we have an ordinance number 77-271, reason only request by Mike and Tracy Gensler. Moving on to consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz? Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka? Tralka?
He's had a message in the chat that he was maybe losing connection.
Okay.
I lost it earlier, too. I had to re-sign on.
Thank you. Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution at the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for project LFM 166-7X-07, bridge replacement CCS on the Cedar Wopsey River Road. You approve and direct the chair to sign for same as authorized. You direct the auditor to make final payment of the amount of $23,322.15, but the total project cost of $777,405.14 as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Kath?
Good morning again, board. I, as is customary, when we get to the final acceptance and the completion of a project, I'd like to show you a few photos of, of the project. And so this is the Cedar Wopsey Road Bridge Replacement. Just a few details about the old bridge. It was built in 1966, so it puts it at about 56 years old. This is, the top photo does show the, the bridge as of our most recent inspection. We do have some substandard. The deck was rated as fair, and then the superstructure, which would be the upper components of the bridge, such as the guardrail, the approach slabs, those were rated as fair. And then our substructure was rated as poor, and you can see some of the advanced deterioration on, on some of the timber pile in the lower photo here, and some corrosion on the steel beam members here. So it was time to replace the bridge. It was a narrow bridge. It was only 28 feet wide on Cedar Wopsey Road, and that is a road in this location that carries approximately 1,900 vehicles per day. And it was located one mile east of, it is located one mile east of Highway 63. The new bridge, 90 feet long and 40 feet wide, so we are building bridges on our paved road system to a wider standard now, just due to increasing volumes, safety measures, and then increasing agricultural traffic. There were some skews. The bridge was skewed at both ends. It's a steel, being supported on steel H piles and then concrete slab design. It was awarded to Jim Schroeder last November for $793,000, and then the contract provided 100 working days with $1,000 a day liquidated damages. I've got just a few, several photos here now of the actual demolition and construction of the new bridge. This just shows demolishing the, the old deck structure. Schroeder came right in in the spring and was very fast at the, the construction of this bridge. You can see here the, this is in preparation of this, one of the columns, sets of columns that are to be placed. Here are the steel, this is the steel work, the steel formwork, excuse me, for the, the new columns that goes directly over the H pile that have been driven to support the columns. Here you can see a row of columns, and then we are, the contractors working on one of the abutments at this point. So now both sets of columns, both rows of columns are done. This western abutment is done, and the contractor has moved on to the other side of the bridge now to work on the, the abutment on the far side here. Here you can see the, the formwork has been placed in preparation for pouring the deck. This was on one of the days of the pouring. The pour of the deck was taking place on this day. You can see, see all of the green steel that is here to support the, the load of the structure. So we have the deck structure done here, and then you can see some of the, the green steel again, waiting for, this would be the placement of the open rail guardrail. This shows some of the approach work. We, on our paving, paved road system, we do install paved approaches about 40 to 60 feet in length. And then asphalt paving to meet those new concrete approaches and to tie it in back into the existing roadway. It's one of the last pieces of work, and then, of course, the guardrail. So this shows the completed bridge. Here's a nice side view of the completed bridge. So project costs were approximately 10% under the contract costs with Schroeder. They only used 56 days in the completion of the bridge, so no liquidated damages were charged. We do anticipate this bridge will last approximately 75 years is what we're projecting. So I would recommend today that you do approve the bridge. Recommend final acceptance be paid, and then we can issue retainage to Jim Schroeder Construction.
Thank you, Kathy.
Appreciate the pictures.
Any further questions for Kathy? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka? Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is other businesses. The motion, direct to county auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at 9:05 on November 1, 2022, Boardroom 201 of Black Hawk County Courthouse.
So moved. Second.
All, any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that this, as I told you in the email, that this is part of keeping our costs down when we are self-constraining our county bridges. We, we let the steel out to, to prospective bidders.
Thank you, Kathy. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the resolution to approve proposal for processing new ARPA requests presented by the ARP committee.
All right, I'll go ahead and talk to this. So I, I believe the board has emailed a copy of this procedure. But essentially, there's a process that's been proposed and approved by the ARPA committee for how we handle requests for funding to date. They've been, you know, sometimes they've come to us first, sometimes they've come to the board first. There's been kind of an inconsistent process, and that's led to some confusion as to how to handle these, both for the departments and for the committee. So first step would be that the request be directed to the county finance director. Currently, that's being directed to the committee chair, but ultimately that would be to the finance director. Director would route the request to both the board and to the ARP committee. The ARPA committee would simply enter it on, on the spreadsheet of potential projects. If a supervisor wants to discuss or take action on that proposed project, the supervisor would place that request on the board agenda, at which point the board can ultimately vote, obviously, as to what action it wishes to be taken, if any. If the board votes to further investigate the request, then the board would instruct the ARPA committee to direct the request or to complete an eligibility questionnaire. Committee would update the status of the request and ultimately would present the completed questionnaire to Baker Tilly for consultant evaluation. Once we hear back from Baker Tilly as to the consultant evaluation, the committee would update the status again, and ultimately, the board would again consider approval of the project as a whole once all the evaluation has been completed. In the event that it is denied, obviously, the, the status would again be updated. But if it, if it is approved, then, then the committee would contact the department requesting it to continue gathering information or other things that are required to, to move forward with the project. So that's the, that's the process that had been proposed. I want to thank Grant Veder for drafting this process. The, the committee voted for unanimously, and I think it's responsive to much of what the board was seeking, which is, A, to have the board speak first as to whether we even want to consider going forward with that project, but B, then have the committee's assistance through the administration process of the evaluation of a project.
Thank you, Mike.
And then that requires us to vote on it in a, in a board meeting, so it's official to go forward through the process.
Correct.
And no financial commitment differentiation either. It's just whatever project, however large or small.
Yep, this would be applicable to every project. And I'm not saying that there wouldn't be potentially idiosyncratic aspects of certain projects that would have to come before the board for separate vote. But to get the ball rolling, it would be the same process for any project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have a resolution on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Tralka? Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution to approve the review of the sheriff's office visitation barrier by the ARP committee. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Renate Nef, jail administrator. I guess I'd sent this letter in, what, a couple weeks ago to be reviewed and placed on here for agenda. I think I was fairly specific, maybe even more so from what Mike indicated than what I needed to be on this one. So I apologize if I got a little wordy there. But I, I guess, do you guys want a brief synopsis of it again here?
I think for the public, it probably helps, too. And I was going to say, I know you think wordy, but I think that's the detail sometimes that we have questions about, so.
Yep, absolutely. Well, this is a project I've been working on with Envision Architecture for several months now. It's one that, kind of stealing Nafisa's words here, I hope will help modernize and help prepare us for future pandemics. When we, a couple years ago, I switched our visitation system over to a video visitation. So we're no longer sending people up to third floor. Part of that, we had to put kiosks in the lobby for the public to come in and use. Due to the current layout of our building, we have six of those kiosks. One is somewhat on its own, the other five are all within a space of 13, there's a total of 13 feet apart. So just over two feet apart with a small little divider, almost like you'd see at a bank or something between. So those people are pretty much on top of each other in the lobby. A side effect of the video visitation is we no longer have to man the front counter, so we've got that big desk just sitting out there with no one sitting at it. By removing that desk, it's going to allow us to spread out those six kiosks more so the people are safer there, more spread out, more barriers between them. And that also allows us to pull the wall from our clerical pool where the public actually goes to now. We can pull that out toward the middle of the lobby a little bit more. A, it's more functional for the people coming in, just that they actually, we still have people, despite signage, they go to that front counter and expect to see someone sitting there, so they stand there. So this will have the windows a little bit closer to the front where it's a more natural progression. But by doing that, that gives our staff quite a bit more room in the clerical pool. Right now, they're all piled up basically in the middle of the room, on top of each other. No barriers, no spacing to speak of. This project will allow us to, obviously, we're not adding any staff for it or anything, so by having that much more space, it's allowing us to space our staff out that much more. And then one final aspect that will help on this is currently we've got school teachers, we've got nurses, we've got all sorts of professions come in to have their fingerprints taken as part of their background checks for their employers. Right now, we take those people back to intake. By doing this, it's going to allow us to have a small room up front where we can do that fingerprinting up front. So we're no longer going to have to take the general public back to the, to the jail where the inmates are. So not only do you have risk mitigation with the, the disease control, the spreading of that kind of stuff there, but there's also, there's obviously a lot of times where we have people back in intake who aren't the most politically correct or aren't the most well-behaved, and now we're bringing some poor school teacher or nurse or whoever in there, and she's subject to whatever the people back in intake are saying or displaying or whatever else may be going on back there. So it, it really just kind of helps us. I mean, I think it checks a lot of the boxes for the ARPA funding with the, the spacing and the barriers. But, you know, we've got a almost 30-year-old building over there that a lot of things are just getting to be dated, and a lot of our processes have changed. So it's a good time to help us move that stuff forward, to modernize that stuff, while still alleviating a lot of those risks. I think in my initial proposal, from talking to Envision, they'd given us a ballpark of between $566,000 and $623,000. As of yesterday, I talked to Angie, and she was able to get me a little bit closer. We've gone through several deviations of the, the plans, and the one we've kind of dialed in on, she is estimating us, again, very preliminary, at about $585,000 for that project right now. So I think my initial, I'd asked her up to $625,000, so hopefully I can, can lower that down a little bit.
Has this come to the board before?
No, this is something new.
How, you said you hired an architect firm. How are you paying for that?
Well, that, not to bring up old, old wounds there, but that was something that we used out of the 40% on the room and board for that.
How much are you paying for that study or whatever they did?
I believe for about $20,000 in on that right now for the professional services. And don't quote me on that, but I think it's right in that ballpark.
Can you get us a figure?
Does anybody know if ARPA pays for architect services? I, I guess the point I'm getting to is maybe it should come to the board first to see if they're interested before you even take that step of an architect so that it would be covered under another funding. Otherwise, you're paying for it out of another fund. I, I don't know, but it just seems like it's kind of cart before the horse, but I could be wrong on that.
In hindsight, Tom, you're probably correct on that. Obviously, now, because we didn't go through the proper bidding process and stuff, was that I don't think there's any way to make that fee part of the ARPA process. And to be honest, we didn't really envision it being this large of a project. We'd kind of thought at the time, between room and board and commissary, which I can't use commissary for much of it because that part has to benefit the inmates, but the visitation area, so a small percentage of that project. We were thinking this was going to be a lot smaller scale than it was. So yeah, when, when the first numbers came back and they were up that high, I kind of did a double take myself. So, so really, when we started this, it wasn't envisioned to be an ARPA project. But, but I think since it checks the boxes and since it came in higher than we'd, we'd anticipated that's where we're at now.
Any further questions?
No, this looks like this is really the first process, or first project to come under our new process anyway, so we're just going forward with a step if we want to have them go through ahead with the completion of the questionnaire and see where that falls.
It is. There, informally, we also had an IT project come under this process. I believe that came before the board last week. But, but yeah, this is, this is one of the first. And the next thing that Captain Nef would be asked to do is get the questionnaire prepared, and we'd begin that back and forth with them if the board approves the project for further evaluation.
So, Mike, the only thing we're doing today is we're not approving anything. We're just sending it to the ARP committee for the process it is supposed to go through.
Correct.
Thank you.
Is that a motion, Tom?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka? White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the motion at the appoint, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion at the appointment of Steven Rhodes are as a representative for the Black Hawk County Board of Adjustments be approved effective October 18, 2022.
I turned that name in. I had Kayla call the individual, and he said that he would serve on it. I do think we're one short yet. So we'll have to really kind of work hard on that. Plus, we need a, the end of the year, we need a health department, and I- Plus, we need a, the end of the year, we need a health department, and I think there's another one up up there, so I think it's important that we try to get these people and and get these boards and committees filled. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve the request today.
Sure, I'll second that. I think Mr. Roser was also on the Board of Adjustment before. I think he served two terms, maybe four as before, so glad to see he's returning.
Well, the problem is, is being too short up till now, there are trouble getting quorums.
Yeah.
So it's very important to fill this position.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the motion that the appointment of Michelle Whedener as the Finance Director of Blackhawk County effective October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, with an annual salary of one hundred twenty-eight thousand be approved.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
Michelle's here. I don't know if you want to.
Yep, Ms. Whedener, I'd like you to go up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Michelle Whedner, and I have to tell you, I, well, I tried retirement, but I decided I needed to be busy, so I'm excited to be here, and I'll be glad to work with the board and all the department heads. I'm sorry, I can't follow Dr. Rebonee. She kind of blew it out of the water today with her closing remarks, but I just want to say I'm excited to be coming on board and joining the team. Sounds like you have a very good team, and I'm excited to be part of it.
Welcome on board.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Yep.
Welcome.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the resolution at the suspension requested by Diana Ultra- Olinger on taxes owed for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three installments in the amount of one thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars for parcel number eight nine one three two eight two oh four zero zero five be approved pursuant to port twenty-seven point eight of the Code of Iowa and the county treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust their records accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. This is the resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution at the taxes on submitted properties which have come on into public ownership through community development efforts, public infrastructure improvement of public purpose acquisition be abated, and to instruct the county treasurer to adjust their records accordingly pursuant to four twenty-seven point three and four four five point six three of the Code of Iowa in the total amount of four thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. This is the resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution at the minor plat of survey submitted by Josh and Hannah Mixdorf to to minor plat, one point five acres located at forty-eight forty-four Shank Road, to construct one new single-family home. The property in question is located approximately four hundred feet east of the Shank Road and east Dunkerton Road intersection. And if approved, that the county order to be directed to certify a copy of the resolution for the Blackhawk County recorder.
So moved.
Oh, I booked it.
Second.
Moved in second. It's all yours, Seth.
Okay, all right. Yeah, basically, yeah, we have a request that was submitted by Josh and Hannah Mixdorf to plat one point five acres in order to construct a new single-family home at four-eight four-four Shank Road, and it was moved by Brundet and seconded by Schaefer to approve the request by Josh and Hannah Mixdorf to plat one point five acres in order to construct a new single-family home at four-eight four-four Shank Road. The request was unanimously approved. The one parcel containing the one point five acres, the proposed minor plat area, was rezoned from A agricultural to A tradition with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommending approval at their May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting. The and then the Board of Supervisors approved the rezone request on June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Surrounding area consists of ag lands with rural homes and a zoned A agricultural district to the north, south, and east. Land in the west is zoned agricultural district and RM residential multiple district. The minor plat area is designated as agricultural on the future land use. The, none of the minor plat areas located in a special flood hazard area. Applicant wishes to plat one point five acres in order to construct a new single-family home. The parcel is large enough to accommodate one developed lot that will meet the lot in size requirements for the AR agricultural residential district by being greater than one point five acres in size, wider than one hundred fifty feet. Rezone area is currently not being farmed in this pasture. The applicant will inherit the farm in the future and will take over the agricultural duties. Technical Review Committee did not have any concerns regarding this request.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none. This is the resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the nine oh five hearing is now nine fifty-five. Bid opening on the proposed fiscal year twenty-three revetment, project L seventy dash eleven in the various locations throughout Blackhawk County.
Second.
Motion to receive and place on file proof of publication.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any written comments?
No, sir.
Oh, you're hearing, oh.
Kathy?
Not your turn yet.
We're ready to run you, are.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll do the the handwritten proposal first, bid first. It is from.
Hold it. We, we, yeah, we got to close our, close hearing after all written comments. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is bids to be received, open in red. Bid deadline was three thirty yesterday?
Yes, all bids were received on time.
Okay.
What was the engineer's estimate on this project?
Hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Kathy.
The first bid is the the hand submitted bid from Boulder Contracting, Grundy Center, Iowa. They have submitted their security bond. Their bid is one hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars. One eight four, comma, six eight five point zero zero. And then, and then we're going to do all of the electronic bids at the same time. Okay, the first bid, or the second bid, excuse me, first electronic bid is from Lodge Construction, one hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred sixty dollars. I won't, you can see that on the screen there. The third bid comes from Peterson Contractors, one hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred Coal excavating is our last bid at two hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and I believe this does mean that they have submitted their security bond if they've been able to bid electronically at this point.
No other bids?
Nope, just those four.
I have a motion that the Board of Supervisors review and place on file the bids to allow time for.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Kathy.
Aye.
Moving on to a nine oh seven hearing on proposed ordinance number seventy-seven dash two seventy, brown rezoned. Motion to receive and place on file proof of publication on notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on October twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file.
So moved.
Any written comments?
No, sir.
Second.
Seth, you're up.
Okay, all right. The Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, reviewed a request by Chad and Trisha Brown to rezone two point eight six acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to construct one new single-family home at north of eight zero nine North Holgate Road, which is located approximately five hundred feet west of the North Holgate Road and Newell Street intersection. Yeah, it was moved by Brundet and seconded by Schaefer to approve the request by Chad Brown to rezone two point eight six acres from agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to construct a new single-family home. The request was approved with a four-one vote. The one parcel containing the two point eight six acres for the proposed rezone area has been zoned agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance. Surrounding area consists of agricultural lands with some rural homes and a zoned agricultural district to the north, south, east, and west. None of the rezone areas located in a special flood hazard area. Site has a line of evaluation score of ninety-three and lease score of two eighty-two. Yeah, the applicant wishes to rezone the two point eight six acres from A to AR in order to construct a new single-family home. The parcel is large enough to accommodate one developed lot that will meet the lot in size requirements for the AR by being greater than one point five acres in size and wider than one hundred fifty feet. The property, main parcel, has a lease score of two eighty-two, which is considered a high-value agricultural site. The zoning ordinance notes that land that is classified for high agricultural value should be strongly discouraged for development in almost every case. It also states that in general, these sites are reserved for agricultural activities and protected from urban development or urban use encroachment. However, the ordinance also states that under very unique circumstances are these sites too to be developed and only after compelling evidence is provided. Zoning ordinance does list several criteria that could be considered unique and compelling evidence. The arrows follow. Area has not been an active row crop production or conservation reserve program for the for the previous fifteen years. Area is not conducive to production by reason of parcel size or shape. Area is compatible with surrounding uses by reason of similar adjacent uses. Many, meeting any one of these criteria should not constitute approval. However, each request will be reviewed and evaluated based on its individual circumstances. The rezone area is currently not being farmed, but was recently in farm production. The applicant is a sixth-generation farmer on a hundred seventy-year-old legacy farm with two hundred anchors and will inherit the farm in the future. The applicant purchased thirty-eight acres of the family farm with the intention of building a home on thirty-five acres. However, the applicant ran into issues with their bank and now need to rezone a portion of their property and plied it off before the the bank will approve a home loan. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval for the request with a four-one vote, and the technical review committee did note the high lease score of two eighty-two for the site.
You know what the one person's concern was?
I think probably because it was prime farm ground, because it's it's a very high value, but I don't know, I think there's some unique circumstances in regards to this situation and it being a family farm.
Seth, what'd you say the circumstances were?
I believe because it was a high agricultural value site is is the reason why that I think Karen Agee voted to deny. But it did receive four votes of approval.
Mr. Brown here.
Yeah.
Would you like to say anything on your?
I have any questions I can answer.
Any questions for Mr. Brown?
I think in your application, you mentioned you were trying to leave as much farmland as possible and undisturbed anyway. This is your intention.
Yep, I just ran into with the fact that they need a legal description of the property for me to build, that's, this was the only process I could do.
Thank you. Any other questions? This is a motion to close the hearing. We already did that.
There is a motion.
Resolution to suspend.
Pardon me? There, it was moved to close the hearing, but we didn't vote on it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the resolution to suspend rules requiring the Board of Supervisors consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? This is the resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Jelka.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is an ordinance adoption at the ordinance amending, ordinance number thirty-six is amended. The Blackhawk County, Iowa agricultural preservation zoning ordinance adopted February second, nineteen ninety-nine by adding subsection number two seventy to section six B, rezoning certain property as described on the above request submitted by Chad and Trisha Brown, and to consider the same for adoption, and if adopted, would be known as seventy-seven dash two seventy.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? Hearing none. This is the resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the nine oh nine hearing proposed on the ordinance number seventy-seven dash two seventy-one, Gensler rezoned. It is now ten oh seven. Motion to receive and place on file proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, a motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, in the Waterloo Courier in accordance with requirements of Code of Iowa, and publication was approved in request submitted by Mike and Tracy Gensler at west of twelve eight oh six Wellman Road to rezone one point seven five acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district to construct a new single-family home. Motion in a second.
Yeah.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are received and placed on file. Any written comments?
No, sir.
Seth?
All right. The the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on September twentieth, twenty twenty-two reviewed requests by Mike and Tracy Gensler to rezone one point seven five acres from agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to construct one new single-family home at west of twelve eight zero six Wellman Road, which is legally, which is approximately a mile southeast of the Wellman Road and West Jessup Road intersection. It was moved by Schaefer and seconded by Brundet to approve the request by Mike and Tracy Gensler to rezone one point seven five acres from agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to construct a new single-family home at west of twelve eight zero six Wellman Road. The request was unanimously approved. Surrounding, the area containing the one point seven five acres, proposed rezone area has been zoned agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen eighty-two. None of the area, none of the rezone areas located in a special flood hazard area is designated by FEMA. The site had a line of value score of fifty-eight and lease score of two thirty-two indicating moderate agricultural value. Applicant wishes to rezone one point seven five acres from A to AR in order to construct one single-family home. The parcel is large enough to accommodate one developed lot that will meet the lot and size requirements for the AR agricultural residential district by being greater than one point five acres in size and wider than a hundred fifty feet. Rezone area is currently pasture, is not in farm production. Land currently contains shrubs and trees. The parcel to the east of twelve eight zero six had two point zero acres that was recommended for approval for a rezone from A to AR district by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regulating on May nineteenth, twenty twenty, and approved by the Board of Supervisors on June sixteenth, twenty twenty. Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved of the rezone request. The technical review committee did not have any issues regarding this request.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
I have a motion on the floor to close the hearing, all in favor, aye?
We, we don't have a motion yet.
Oh.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, a resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, this is the resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is an ordinance adoption at ordinance amending, ordinance number thirty-six is amended. The Blackhawk County, Iowa Agricultural Preservation zoning ordinance adopted February second, nineteen ninety-nine by adding section number two seventy to section six B, rezoning certain property as described on the above requests submitted by Mike and Tracy Gensler, and to consider same for adoption, and if adopted, be known as ordinance number seventy-seven dash two seventy-one.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, this is the resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. On these next two items, seeing as how Mr. Chalk isn't here, I'd like to table them until next week. Any objection?
Well, I think, yeah, I was going to say, I think, I thought the point was trying to just have a discussion, not necessarily board action, but to have discussion on, on the items on that capital purchases because they need to do it next week.
Well, I'd like Mr. Chalk's input too, but that's okay. What's, what's the other, the feeling of the other supervisors online? Hopefully, they didn't leave already.
I'm, I'm fine with going forward today.
Okay.
Are we going to take, I'm not, I'm not going to support any action today, so.
No, I don't, I don't think when Kathy requested it, there was really any action. I think that just got added later.
General information?
Just possible board action, so, yeah.
I just wonder if we should delay it a week so we got input, otherwise, I'm assuming it's going to come back to the board for action later. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that was my intention.